I remember listening to Ron tell stories about the bureaucracy and about, in his case, he was a Marine, and hearing the stories about the VA facility he was in, in Washington, DC. It almost sounds, and that was back in 1973, it almost sounds like very little has changed in the intervening 35-plus years. If you had an opportunity to address Congress on veterans' issues, Jesse, what would you tell them?
Well, based on my experience, Mitch, what I would tell them is exactly what I just spoke about right now. If we are to come home with our injuries and whatnot, and then we still fall under the active-duty category in the military, in whatever branch it is, and we're going to be handed over to the VA system, then everything should go with us, as far as all the accessibilities, as far as the treatment goes, everything. It shouldn't be, oh, wait a minute, we can only do so much, and the rest is based on you being discharged from the military. It should not happen that way whatsoever. And I do understand that, once you fall into the medical facilities in the military branches, that, you know, it's only transitional, it's not long-term. The VA is long-term care. But what that says, still, you still have to go through that transition point of being demobilized and getting all your paperwork in order so that you can get your medical discharge from the military. But until that happens, there should be something in place, a law, ruling, between the active component military branches and the VA facility to step up to the plate and say, okay, yeah, we understand he's active-duty, and yes, we can take care of his or her injuries. And I do, I do believe that, at this point in time, that's where we're headed at, which is a good thing, because, as you can see, as I said, Long Beach has really stepped up and answered the call here.
Now, we've got just a couple of minutes left. With your experience, what are you now doing to work with other vets to make sure that the experiences that you've been through aren't repeated?
Well, I'm not one out to seek all these individuals who come home with their injuries. It actually comes to me, and it's all based on my experiences. This Sergeant Major, who's blind, has gone through this transition at one point. He can guide you and lead you in the right direction to get the medical treatments that you need, and/or maybe some of these devices that are out there to assist those who need them, such as an iPod, a wheelchair, it's a wheelchair that's all-terrain and rises six feet up. I've done fundraising for that in Wallace, Texas. I did a bike ride, 100-mile bike ride, to raise money for some of these troops that are paralyzed, and also some who come home, who are homeless and have no place to go to, and who are also completely blind. What is it that we can do for these warriors coming home with their injuries, and they've lost everything? So what I do is connect the dots.
So they're calling you. You're now enough of a public figure that you're actually getting calls from veterans who need your help?
Yes, that's, that's, that's what's happening at this point in time, yes.
And we should also point out, you mentioned briefly your employer a little earlier, you are going to be going back to work soon?
Hopefully soon. I don't know if it's going to happen this year, but Southern California Gas Company, who's been my employer for 22-some years, they're still standing by, waiting until I get discharged, and they will be embracing me, God willing, and hopefully I'll be back in my saddle again of being employed.
Well, I really am so pleased that, that things are working out for you, and I'm also proud to have you as a member of my organization, the American Council of the Blind. Jesse has spoken on behalf of ACB in his story in Congress on accessible technology a couple of months back, and I'm looking forward to working closely with you as time continues. I want to thank Sergeant Major Jesse Acosta, United States Army, for being with us on this edition of Disability Forum.
You're welcome, Mitch.
If you would like information about the Department on Disability, you may reach us by phone at area code 213-485-6334 VOICE, or 213-485-6655 TTY, or via email at www.lacity.org/dod. Also, if you have a question or comment about Disability Forum, please email me directly at mitch, M-I-T-C-H, dot Pomerantz, P-O-M-E-R-A-N-T-Z, at la city dot org. This has been Disability Forum with your host Mitch Pomerantz. Until next time, thanks for watching, and take care.
LA City View Channel 35, your city, your channel.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, LeBons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, and Weiss, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Alafon, we are six members, waiting four more, please take a way down as soon as possible. We're going to get a quick start to our first meeting after recess. Thank you all very much. Check out the answer. Thank you, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Alafon, we are waiting three more members, Mr. Cardness, Ms...
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to Tuesday, September 2nd, 2008, meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Welcome back from the recess, everybody. Good to be here in City Council chambers. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 and rebroadcast each evening. Want to thank our viewers for joining us and the members of the public who have waited patiently here for the beginning of the meeting. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM in the City Council chambers. We go to Van Nuys City Hall once a month on the first Friday of the month. We're also available online at la city dot org and through your telephone at 213-621-CITY. We have 11 members, so, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alafon, Cardness, Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, LeBons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and Aquormus, President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds, without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. LeBons seconds, without objection, those two will be approved as well. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All right, if I could have everybody's attention, it's now time for our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Reyes, will you be kind enough to lead us, if I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our salute to the flag?
Thank you, Council President, for the honor. Everybody rise, please, put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and if we can run through the agenda.
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay. Do we have cards on those?
There are no cards.
Okay, we will open and close the public hearing on 1 and 2. Anybody wishing to call those special? All right, if nobody from the council wishes to, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next...
Item 3 is the Hollywood Entertainment District Property and Business Improvement District Notice for Public Hearing. Council should close the public hearing and no other action is required. The ballot tabulation will be announced at tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, without objection, we will go ahead and close the hearing on number 3. The ballot tabulation will be announced tomorrow. And next item, please.
Items 4 through 9 are Street Lighting District, District's Notice for Public Hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances to September 23rd.
Is there any objection to that? If not, we will go ahead and continue those till the 23rd. Next items, please.
Items 10 through 25 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Colleagues, 10 through 25, any specials from the council, 10 through 25? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved, without objection. Let's send 10, 19, 20, and 25 forthwith, please. Next items, please.
Items 26 through 55 are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a request to receive and file item 40QQ.
If there's no objection, we'll move to receive and file QQ on 40. Which one? 54, we'll call special for Mr. Parks, Mr. Cardness, yeah?
27 and 28 put it, put it over for two weeks.
Okay, is there any objection to putting over 27, 28? That's till next Tuesday, the 9th. If not, we'll continue those. Ms. Hahn?
Forty-two.
Forty-two for Ms. Hahn.
Are we on 50 yet?
Uh-huh, we're there, too.
And 50.
And 50 as well.
Forty-two and 50.
You got it. Earning your money. Any other items special? We have a card on item 38 and 48, so we'll call those special for cards from the public. We'll open and close the other public hearing. If we can, please open the roll in the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those will be approved. We did have a card for 1, if we can please reconsider that. It came in a little after we had voted, but please open the roll, if there's no objection, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. And we'll call that...
Twelve ayes.
We'll call that special for a card from the public as well. Okay, we also had one card come in on item 29, if we can call that special, I mean, reconsider it, excuse me. Please open the roll on 29, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are now all before us, that will take us to public comment. This is for general public comment, which is for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the City Council. There is a code of conduct up there on the podium and a clock to help you guide your two minutes of public testimony. Our first speaker today is Daniel Wright, after that will be Zuma Dog. Good morning, Mr. Wright.
Good morning, President. Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard, Los Angeles, and a member of the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition. In the previous testimony before this council, you learned that, for the last eight years, the Autry National Center has told this council and the public that it has a $100 million endowment, when in fact, on the day of the merger with the Southwest Museum, Autry had only $1.8 million of invested endowment assets. A detailed report of this accounting scandal was delivered to your planning deputies before the summer recess, and I hope you had a good recess. Today, we take up the absolutely false claims being made here at the City Hall that it is not feasible to continue to use the Southwest Museum as the primary location to exhibit the Southwest Museum's $1 billion collection. I am holding up Autry's own 227-page expert study that answers that question. The purpose of the study was to determine whether or not it was physically possible to rehabilitate the Southwest Museum. You have before you just two pages of that study. One page lists the multidisciplinary experts that looked at this issue, and the second page is the conclusion of the report. And I will quote from page 20, the conclusion of this report. It says, "This report has analyzed what would be required to prepare the Southwest Museum for continued museum use with its envelope and infrastructure meeting museum standards. It has been shown by the respective consultants who collaborated on this report that the Southwest Museum building can achieve these standards, and further, with some further investment, that it can provide greatly enhanced service to the community, attract more visitors, and earn more money. The Autry wants to spend $100 million to expand in Griffith Park. This report says it will cost $16 to $22 million. This is the environmentally superior alternative. Please look carefully at this issue."
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. After that, we'll go out to the San Fernando Valley and Donna Perman. Good morning, Mr. Dog.
Ah, jeez, I'm just sick to my stomach, having to come back here, look at everybody here, what am I doing? Anyway, I'd like to say a few things here, that, first of all, the Zuma Dog Summer Slideshow is available at zumatimes.com, recapping the memories of the past four months with City Council. I know you'll enjoy it, it's at zumatimes.com. And I'd also like to say, to save paper, I'd like all the council members to please go to zumatimes.com, because I recap these council meetings, I take in a lot of information from the public that they'd like you to be aware of, and complete analysis at zumatimes.com, including videos of, you might have heard, I busted Gavin Newsom for parking in the fire lane in Malibu, that made it to San Francisco Chronicle, I got Arnold Schwarzenegger, Marantonio, and yourselves. Now, I'd also like to say, I gotta be a lot nicer to Eric Garcetti, I just realized something. You might have heard that there's an FBI investigation into City Hall, and it's possible, if Eric isn't indicted himself under this, that he could be the next mayor. Zuma Dog is here to say, you might have heard that there's an investigation from the Federal Bureau of Investigation. I've been saying, one day I'm going to walk in here for public comment, there's going to be a giant federal padlock on City Hall, and it's going to be shut down by the feds, and that's what it needs to come down to. So thank you, the FBI investigation into Rocky Delgado is merely the tip of the iceberg, of which they have already gone to the IT department. I'm here to say, council, they should be very nervous. This is... Do you think the Federal Bureau of Investigation cares about Rocky's wife? It's the federal government, you think they care about Rocky's wife? They know if they can go in there, and they've gone to ITA, and they have started to look into emails, which I have been told by insiders will allow the FBI to go into a phishing expedition of council. I have said this is racketeering, Rico, we are under attack, it's going to come to an end. Take back the city, zumatimes.com.
Mr. Dog, if you'll please watch your language, language of a sexual nature is not protected language, we'll have to keep you on a short leash, Mr. Dog. Donna Perman is our next speaker.
Welcome back, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, I see on our agenda, the City Council is throwing our money away with our $100,000, Million Tree Initiative, of course, our friends at CRA, of course, only in their project area, $2,245,514 development of three courtyards, affordable housing by our friends at CRA. City Council and the CRA seem to have a relationship with each other, and we don't have a say on what's done with our money. All we have here, here is the city needs more money. We provided with extra taxes, property taxes, sales tax, internet tax, meter fees, trash fees, phone tax, and our hard-working city employees getting put down because they get a raise they deserve. On the other hand, they take away from the small amount, small raise, making it moot point. People are having a hard time, people who don't come here, but depend on Zuma Dog to talk for you, why don't you help him so that he will be able to come here, with gas money. And last part, since I don't know what to say, I'll sing a little bit of this song, the City Council singing our favorite, favorite things. Projects for CRA, Hollywood to LA, projects done yesterday, tomorrow, and today. Projects in the valley, everywhere they do spring, these are a few of my favorite things. When we're turned down, a bill does not pass, and we're feeling sad. I simply remember my favorite things, and then I don't feel so bad. And I'm saying, stop the City Council taking all our money and be really worried about Proposition R, because you may not get your third term. Okay, that's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman, thanks for preparing that music for our welcome back. Don Garza is our next speaker, and after that will be Arnold Sacks. Good morning, Mr. Garza.
Good morning, most beautiful people in the world, and I'm talking to the people out there in TV land, not the people in here, because some of you guys, I don't know, all these beards are kind of like, well, me too, so, you know.
Are you saying we can't trust a man in a beard?
You know, at least they got beards, I don't know what happened with you, man, I don't know, but what y'all were doing in Denver, where y'all, you know, y'all didn't have beards going on, but, I got a complaint, a big nasty, nasty, nasty complaint against the city of Los Angeles. Where is our Wi-Fi? Where is it? What's the, what's the deal here? You know what? I'm about to become rich, maybe that's the problem. You don't want people in the city of LA to be paying taxes into the general fund, maybe that's why we don't have Wi-Fi. There is an event going on at the Convention Center that is going to be bringing people from all over the world to teach people how to use free, open-source software that can only be downloaded from the internet, free, mind you, to build content management system websites. The exorbitant price of Wi-Fi is just, is just ridiculous. We need to find a way to facilitate Wi-Fi all over the place in the city of Los Angeles so that we can all become rich, using open-source software. I'm going to be taking all of these classes, they're free, I'm making money off of it now, pretty soon I'll be putting money in every one of you guys' campaigns. I'm going to be influencing City Hall in such a way that they're going to, Zuma Dog is going to be calling out my name pretty soon, all because I have access to Wi-Fi, I can download the software and build content management systems. Let's make this opportunity for everybody in the city of Los Angeles so that we can get out of this economic funk, but we need to work on this Wi-Fi issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Our next speaker is Arnold... Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. After that, we'll go back to Van Nuys and Rick Nightingale. Good morning, Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, Mr. President. Arnold Sacks, thank you very much. Welcome back. I'd like to recap some things that occurred last month regarding some agenda items that were held before the city council. Regarding some of the things in the mayor's gang initiative, it was quoted that $100 million, it cost, excuse me, it cost the city $1 million per gang killing. And when you look at that and you say that we have a tax initiative gonna be placed on a ballot to raise $30 million, that's only 30 killings. Then that money has gone down the drain. And also, it was reported in the newspaper that, in the Daily Breeze, 46 nonprofits applied for funding for the mayor's new gang initiative. Forty-six nonprofits there. I believe there's almost 25 nonprofits involved in the housing department. There's, how many, how many business improvement districts are there in the city, and each one's run by a nonprofit that also has a for-profit that manages them? Just, Ms. Chick, the auditor, if you're listening, could we get an audit on the number of nonprofits that are bleeding the city dry in the name of good government? It would really be helpful to the public to know this, because if they're doing all the work, what's the city council doing? Also, coming up, there was some news about the SEIU, the LAUSD consultants averaging $200,000 a year. Thank goodness we have the city council lookout for the salaries of the city employees. The LADOT, the DWP has an ethical wall, the mayor, conflict of interest policy. If it's a proprietary department, isn't that what happened at the airport? There was a conflict of interest with Gina Marie Lindsay? That she, do the proprietary departments have the same standards? Thank you for your time. Your answers and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. And just as a point of information, I think the $1 million per death is after the fact in the initiative Ms. Hahn put forward is to try to do preventative programs that are cheaper than $1 million per person. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker out in Van Nuys. After that is Carrie Morrison.
Yeah. Good morning, Rick Nightingale.
Good morning.
Boy, I really agree with Mr. Sacks there regarding all this nonprofit thing. I mean, everybody jumps on the bandwagon and gets on this nonprofit thing, and then all of a sudden, it seems people, money sure gets lost real fast. I don't know. I just don't understand it. But the one reason why I'm here is it was just, I just cannot believe what one of your council members done. You're not supposed to mention names regarding this DNA from women's rape. I cannot believe that he turned around and head of a committee, I think you people are stretched so thin and wants to take on so much, say responsibility, do whatever, but and let a million, a million-three that the government gives you, and now we're down to what, 468, or it's in the 400, high 100, $400,000 brackets, that I didn't have time, or we didn't have time to turn around and get it organized and that stuff. Then you buy material, buy equipment or whatever, but you don't let it go back. I mean, we've been talking about this DNA thing for years. I mean, and it's sitting in a vault where all these people are, these women are getting raped and that, and you people just flat-ass don't care. That's all I can say is you don't care, and you don't think it's a real crime. And it really is, especially for a female. And you people are paid to do a job, and why don't you do it? It's just, like, like the dog. I mean, you people are just, it's just so corrupt. You pick what you want to do, and then you don't want to do something. You wheel and deal in the back room where we can't hear about it. It's still, it's just ridiculous, the things that you people do. And I'm telling you, hey, I don't like Democrats between Republican and Republicans, but I'll tell you, the people that went back to the convention, you people want to give everything away. You don't want nobody to work for it. I think it's time for the people work for it. And I'm still waiting for, excuse me, for Mr. Smith to talk to me about my draft. Have forgot about it, Ms. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightingale. And on the DNA issue, if you'd like to work with us and Human Rights Watch on that issue, I know Mr. Weiss's office, my own, working very hard on that. We'd love to have you as part of that coalition to continue to push for that. Carrie Morrison is our next speaker, and our final one for public comment. Good morning.
Welcome back after Labor Day weekend. And I visited, came down on the subway, running a few minutes late this morning because today is the day that we will be working with the city clerk's office to open up the ballots for the Hollywood Entertainment District renewal. I'm Carrie Morrison. I'm the executive director of the Hollywood Property Owners Alliance. So I just wanted to take a moment just to say, you know, it was 12 years ago, 1996 September, when the city council first adopted the ordinance for the Hollywood Entertainment District. And that was a very historic, I think, time in the rejuvenation of Hollywood. I was privileged to be hired as their executive director and came on board in December of 1996, and it has been exciting to see all the changes in Hollywood all these many years. But I want to say that we would not have been able to do this without a partnership with the city of Los Angeles. I can say now that we have great friends in the Bureau of Street Lighting, the Los Angeles Police Department, the Bureau of Street Services, our city council, council member Eric Garcetti and his staff have been amazing partners with us, and going back to councilwoman Jackie Goldberg, who helped to start it, council member Labange and his staff, because they are neighbors of the Hollywood Entertainment District, and then finally, the city clerk's office. The city clerk, over all these years, has worked very, very hard to perfect and refine the whole process by which business improvement districts are formed and have really come up with a streamlined way to make it easier in an administrative way. But I do not want to undercut how hard it is to build a coalition and consensus in the community to form a bid. We started this process for the renewal in July of 2007, and it culminates today. I know you all know how much consensus it takes to put a bid together and to keep it together. One more thing I might point out, that in the next 10 years, this is a 10-year renewal, if it is in fact passed, it's a $3.4 million a year bid, which means that the property owners in Hollywood are pledging over $34 million to play their part toward the continued revitalization of Hollywood. And one more thing I'd like to say, in 10 years, we hope that Hollywood will be a walkable, pedestrian neighborhood, and we are also working very hard with the city and the county to end homelessness in Hollywood in 10 years, as is in parallel with the national objective to do so. So thank you for all your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, and thank you for your staff's great work, and it's been a pleasure seeing Hollywood bloom under your leadership. Thank you. With that, that will close our general public comment. If we can take up the first item called special, please.
Item one called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, item number one is before us.
Thank you, Arnold Sacks. Since this involves non-ambulatory passenger vehicle services, I'm wondering if that pertains to access services and also taxis, because I believe that the Taxi Commission is looking at increasing the fares. But if it does involve access services, I'd just like to point out that access services, from June 23rd, the Board of Directors meeting, they're having conference, existing litigation, United Independent Transit Services versus access services. Just exactly what service would United Independent Transit Service provide if it was using access or was involved in access? Thank you for your answers on that. There's no vehicles involved, there's no ownership, and there's no company. So how do they collect money from access services? Again, thank you for your answers, your time, and your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Item number one is now before us. If we can please open the roll again and close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item twenty-nine called special for cards.
Okay, item number twenty-nine is next. Richard Parks is our first speaker. After that will be Lucille Butler. Good morning.
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your consideration of item twenty-nine. Over the last two years, we have, the alley between Normandy and Brighton, residents along this alley have been victimized three times by hot prowler burglaries, the worst of which occurred at midnight. One of my neighbors was watching TV when an intruder broke in through the bedroom window, smashed into the bedroom window, took a keyboard out, and then threatened the owner of the property with a handgun. Just last summer, we had two young men who were gunned down in this alley. Problems of prostitution, illegal dumping, graffiti, gang activity, drug dealing are endemic in this alleyway. Here, we have gathered over the last two years, 79% support from the property owners. We're temporarily gating this alley. We have submitted for council consideration a letter from the neighborhood council endorsing this proposal, as well as a letter from Chief Craig of the Southwest Division. I just ask you if you would please favorably consider this request to temporarily gate the alley between Brighton and Normandy Avenue and to grant us some relief from the criminal activity that we've been experiencing over the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments today. Lucille Butler is our next speaker. Thank you for coming down to City Hall. Good morning, Ms. Butler.
Yes, good morning. Thank you all for allowing me to speak before you this morning. I don't see the problem as being as severe as Mr. Parks. I'm against the closure. When I purchased my property on Normandy, I live on Normandy, which is basically almost like a freeway. I've seen two neighbor and a visitor to my home's vehicles being demolished right in front of my house because the traffic is so fast, and they don't expect people to be slowing down to park or turn into a driveway. So it's, most Normandy residents enter their property from the alley, and it's safer for me to unlock my gate behind my home than to be at either end of the alley unlocking a gate. So it doesn't matter that Mr. Parks has gathered all of these signatures in favor of the closure. They don't understand my being a Normandy resident, what it means to me to keep the alley open and granting us all easy access to our, accessing our properties from the alley. They have a wonderful residential street where there's hardly any traffic other than the Brighton Street residents. So I don't see that, the one shoe, and I don't want this kind of activity. There's hardly any of that kind of activity. That's an overkill that you're hearing from Mr. Parks. There's hardly any more dumping, and it comes from the residents of Normandy and Brighton Street neighbors than it does from outside. And I offer an alternative to all of them. Let us put up cameras to deter the traffic through our, through that portion of the alley. Let us get our police to show a higher patrol through that part of the alley to deter the foot traffic, and it's only foot traffic. We have, we have some graffiti, not a lot of prostitution, as Mr. Parks states, not a lot of...
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, the clock, your time's up, so I'm gonna ask you to conclude. It's okay.
My request not to close the alley, and what does temporary closure of the alley mean?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to cut you off there, but I'll see if we can get those answers for you right now. Thank you so much. Appreciate your testimony. We have one speaker from the council on this. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to refer to Ms. Butler's concerns, and I talked with her recently at one of our grand openings, but unfortunately, many of the issues she brings up, she's in the minority. We've gone through this process in '05 and '06 where communities, people have signed a petition recently as August 20th, a number of the people that still live in the area have supported this temporary closure. We understand that we can't make the alley tailor-made to every person's usage, but I think what Mr. Parks has said, dealing with the issues of the crime, the police department has certainly supported the closure and the continued closure, and that I'd ask that we support that also, and that I spoke to Ms. Butler and mentioned to her that we're unable to ignore the masses because she has a particular issue when the larger percentage of the public in that community is asking that we close that alley. And so I'd ask for an aye vote that we extended.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. And we'll see if the city clerk can answer your questions, ma'am, as well about what a temporary closure and all that is. Are there any other members who wish to be heard on this issue? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item thirty-eight called special for cards.
Okay, we have item thirty-eight. Mr. Sacks, if I could come forward?
Thank you, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly regarding, actually, the commuter express transit vehicles. I believe when the DOT was reorganized back in the late 80s, mid-80s, and the dash was introduced, dash around, short hops, that's what the initials stand for, and the LACMTA was created when the city transit department and the county transit department merged. So my question would be regarding the commuter express transit vehicles and the transit system in itself. Why is LADOT providing commuter express service throughout the county when the LADOT is a city transit department? Isn't providing service in the county, the county's domain, shouldn't the LADOT or the DOT be concerned with city transportation issues? Isn't there a bus line in the San Fernando Valley that runs through city property that should be looked at by the LADOT?
Sir, pardon me, we'll hold your time. This is about Wi-Fi on the commuter express, and I know there's other issues that have to do with the DOT, but again, this is on this, and we won't comment specifically on Wi-Fi on the commuter express, so if you could please direct your comments towards that. Thank you.
Well, I'm directing my comments regarding the commuter express.
About Wi-Fi on the commuter express. Go ahead.
Well, if the LADOT wasn't involved with the commuter express, then they wouldn't have to put Wi-Fi on it. And I see no reason why the LADOT should be involved in commuter express, because it's a county-wide bus system, and the LADOT is a city transportation department. Is that clear enough? Did I get around that? Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you. And I know there are a number of different bus services that use the term commuter express, but the DOT ones serve the city of Los Angeles, so I hope that helps clear that up. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. We had a card on item forty, which we'd voted on, but Ms. Perman, will we consider that? We got that a little late. If we can open the roll on forty, please, for reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is now before us. Donna Perman in Van Nuys on item number forty.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, I want to know why there isn't a fiscal impact on all these fee waivers. Certainly, with this being so many, that there should be a fiscal impact. I can't believe why you put so many fee waivers, even with the two-week recess, our city can't afford to waive all these fees. Our budget projects are the Fall Semester Move-In Day, number E, for $13,120; number G, USC Football Season, $16,718. Why isn't USC paying for that? Number V, Festival Cultural, for $5,000; number A, A, East LA Mexican Independence Parade, for $4,962; BB, Fiesta Pietras, California, $6,752; Panio Fest, EE, for $5,700; GG, the Fourth Annual Fiesta, De Las Patias, $4,731; MM, Carmes, a celebration, the Independence, $3,320. Why so many Mexican independence celebrations? Shouldn't we all come together as one? Unfortunately, taken care of. Number QQ, $15,000, so I'll take that one off since you said that one's not going through. SS, for $24,975; 35th Annual LA Korean Festival. WW, the Rose Summer Festival, $10,000, over $10,000. And I think, let's see if there's any more. Anyway, these are way too many. My, oh, here's one, Sunderland de Hunger Cultural Festival, $5,315, AAA. It's one, BBB, $6,704, Sunderland de Hunger, free movies in the park, but I don't see why, I'm not going there. I don't see why that means to be so much money. Fourth annual, anyway, we got one. These are coming way too... These are coming way too much. You have an $8,000, $11,000.
Thank you very much. I think we're out of town, time, excuse me, but appreciate your comments, and that'll close the public hearing on this one, which we voted on once before but wanted to...
And, Mr. President, just for the record, Q, Q is to be received and filed.
Correct. We will move to receive and file Q, Q again, and the rest of them, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Again, thank you. Next item, please.
Item 42, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, number 42.
Thank you, colleagues. This is just an opportunity to give a shout-out to LAX and to the fact that we absolutely are prepared with, right now, two gates that will accommodate the new A380 Airbus that Qantas will be servicing here at LAX. And really, all we're doing today is we're approving these street banners that are going to go up announcing that October 20th, the Qantas Airbus will be landing at LAX to service their passengers with the new aircraft. But it's a great opportunity to say, you know, for two years at least, you've heard me talking about the modernization of LAX. We're finally embarking on a modernization that actually is going to work under the great leadership of Gina Marie Lindsay. But we've always been talking about, are we going to be ready for the new Airbus? And this is the future of the airline industry. This is the future of airline travel. These airplanes are larger, but they're quieter and they're more fuel-efficient. So it actually solves a lot of the problems that we know are associated with takeoff and landings of aircraft and the noise that that generates in and around LAX. So I'm just, we're approving the content of these banners. It basically says, "LA welcomes A380." October 20th is when they're planning to come, but there has been so much talk that Los Angeles was not going to be competitive, we were not going to be ready. We weren't understanding that we needed to make accommodations so that these airlines would choose to land at LAX, which frankly, they don't have to anymore. So this is a great day to say, we're ready, we're modernizing. We have two gates right now that can accommodate these A380s, and by 2012, we'll be adding 10 new gates that will, on top of these, that will accommodate the A380s. It's a simple thing we're doing to approve these banners, but I thought it was an opportunity to let everyone know that LA is prepared, we're ready, and we're excited to welcome the next generation of aircraft into Los Angeles International Airport.
Thank you very much. We have two other speakers, Mr. Rosendahl and then Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning and welcome back, all my colleagues. I missed you all. We had a couple of good weeks away from the cell phone and the job, and here we are again. So it's a pleasure to be with you all. Yes, Ms. Hahn is right on the mark. I'll never forget a year and a half ago when we started the modernization of the Tom Bradley Terminal. She got up in the press conference and she said, "We've got to do some backside-ing of the Tom Bradley Terminal so that we have the A380 100% in place by the year 2012." She was actually right on the mark, and now they're moving in that direction to put the rest of the contact gates on the backside of the Tom Bradley Terminal so that we will meet that deadline. The important thing about the A380 is it's quieter, it's better with the fuel, both efficient and with the exhaust, and it replaces three planes with one. So it can mean less air traffic, it can mean cleaner air coming out of it, and it could put us where we need to be modernizing in the 21st century. I want to make it clear to all the viewers, and welcome viewers, good to see you in a couple of weeks after we've all been away, is this: modernization, yes; expansion, no, at LAX. It's as simple as that. And I've made it very clear that the A380 can come to LAX without us having to expand the geometry of that airport. And we're going to stay very firm on that, Ms. Hahn and I, I know, and Mr. Labange as well, all three of us, who take a big interest, as does everybody else around the horseshoe, in our LAX. So it's a great new day. We're going to make the target. October will happen like that, it's next month, and our great city is on its way to making this airport the most modern airport in America. We're in that process. We're going to have a people mover, we're going to have a consolidated rental, we're going to have a midfield terminal, and we're going to get the green line into the airport. And I want to thank State Senator Jenny Orpezza for her leadership up in Sacramento and forcing it into that bill. And we must vote yes for that half-cent sales tax when it happens in November. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to stand very briefly and thank Ms. Hahn, because you all of a sudden just saw the opportunity to say something that got something going. Mr. Rosendahl coming as if you landed right there at LAX and said something has to be done, and you've changed the way things look at it. I think it's all about making it safe and efficient, whether you call it expansion or not. I understand that. It's about safety, it's about modernization, it's about making it work, and whatever it takes to do that, I support, because safety is the number-one issue after convenience. Our toughest challenge, members, is because the world has changed after 9/11. People do not travel through airports without some challenges, and we have to make sure with these new airplanes that they are correctly parked and people can officially move in the field. And Ms. Hahn, I also want to say, your dad is up in heaven looking down at you smiling because you called this little street banner program "special" and gave such a great speech that was followed by Mr. Rosendahl. I hope I added to it. Thank you, members. God bless Kenny Hahn.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine.
I just want to chime in with everyone else on the issue on LAX. It needs to be modernized. Anywhere you travel in the world, the airports are modern, efficient, customer-friendly. LAX is not customer-friendly, it's not efficient. Getting into the airports, a hassle. Getting to a terminal, if you ever go in the morning, southwest, people are lined up outside, a great number of people trying to go through the security check. So, Mr. Rosendahl, I know it's your district, and we're not expanding it, we're making it better for the people who are going to fly to different destinations. So, Janice, thank you for bringing this forward, and we all fly in and out of LAX, and it's a hassle to get there, a hassle when we arrive. The entire environment has to be modified and enhanced for the comfort of the public and safety of the traveling public. So, Janice, thank you. Bill, thank you for the airport and the A380. Welcome aboard to Los Angeles.
Thank you. And with that, let's go ahead and close the roll, I mean, sorry, and open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 48, called special for cards.
Item 48, Mr. Sacks. He's before us. After that, we will have item 50.
Good morning again, City Council.
Morning.
Thank you. Yeah, very quickly, 48, wasn't this the pipeline, the sidewalk repairs from the pipeline? And my question regarding that is, and I've come before the City Council numerous other times regarding the pipeline business improvement districts, wouldn't this qualify as a business improvement district, as the pipelines are usually underground and relatively speaking, they'd have no intersection with the sidewalks? They'd have no, there'd be no basis for them to be involved in any kind of sidewalk repair? But as a business improvement district, you could take the funds from the pipeline business improvement district, which isn't really a business improvement district, or so we've been told in previous meetings by the City Council. By the way, which nonprofit runs this particular business improvement district? Again, thank you as always for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your questions.
Also, sir? Thank you for clarifying those points.
Sure.
But I'd also like to point out that only the LADOT does use commuter express as their logo, and as far as the funding for the gangs, we saw what happened with the police department with the garbage fees.
Okay. That will now close public comment. If you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 50, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item number 50.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, item 50 is a resolution to extend the medical marijuana interim control ordinance in the city of Los Angeles for six months. I wanted to take this opportunity, and I know Councilmember Zine will support me in this, to really urge our city attorney to come back with an ordinance that will set up good guidelines for how we permit these clinics, how we can enforce the unauthorized clinic. And the point of this interim control ordinance was to prohibit any new storefront medical marijuana shops who are not authorized and are just there for profit to operate in the city of Los Angeles. So we were hoping to have a good ordinance in place by now so we wouldn't have to extend this interim. But as you know, the city, the Attorney General, Jerry Brown, has come down with some very specific guidelines which we think will help permit, and more importantly, will help law enforcement to enforce proper guidelines on establishments that are really there to support the safe access for people who are chronically ill and people who obviously need medical cannabis to help them in a time in their life when they're tragically ill and nothing else seems to work. So this is a six-month extension, but I know Councilmember Zine and I both wrote a letter to the city attorney outlining concerns that we still have about the establishment of some of these clinics, but we need to put in place good guidelines, a good ordinance, where we can monitor, regulate, and permit the proper operations of these clinics, and then give our law enforcement the tools to crack down on those that are not lawful and to have no business operating in the city of Los Angeles. So I'm just using this opportunity to say, let's extend our interim ordinance, but let's really ask the city attorney to come back, using the Attorney General's guidelines on how we might make safe operations of these establishments here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Zine is next.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you for that, and I agree with you 100%. The reason why we could do in the six-month extension is there's different departments, planning, building, safety, police department, they haven't completely reviewed. I know you have a task force that's been established with the legitimate, shall we say, vendors. The chief of police is supporting this, the Attorney General, as you said, is supporting it. We have to make sure that they're established in legitimate areas, the working hours, that they're in operation, et cetera. We know there's a lot of abuse, and the moratorium permits the city to prevent any future medicinal marijuana facilities from being established. So the six months, which was part of the original proposal, if we need additional time, which we are now calling for that, and I agree that the city attorney needs to draft this in a manner that will give the safety, the security to the neighborhoods, permit people who need it to have the opportunity to take medicinal marijuana with a legitimate doctor's prescription, but we've heard of some of the recent raids throughout this region where there's a lot of money being confiscated by authorities, a lot of guns being confiscated, and a lot of people misusing what medicinal marijuana facilities are all about. So hopefully, the city attorney with the other departments, planning, building, safety, police can work together. So this gives us six more months to draft an ordinance that will be effective, along with the Attorney General, which is going to be part of the enforcement, and if they're running outside the law, there will be serious consequences, incarceration and recovery of the marijuana, and also the dollars that they're bringing in, millions and millions of dollars that some of these illegally run operations. So thank you for that, and hopefully, the city attorney's departments can get this done in six months. If we don't do this, then the problem is, they can start sprouting up tomorrow without any control, so the moratorium's important to keep in place. Thank you, so we request an "aye" vote on this.
The city attorney, would you like to say something?
I appreciate your concern, Councilmember Zine and Councilmember Hahn. Our office has received the guidelines. They were just issued by the Attorney General's office over the past few weeks. We are evaluating them and digesting them. We'll be working with the involved departments, and we will be working on the new ordinance and incorporate what needs to be incorporated into the text of that new ordinance.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Ms. Hahn and I want to thank Mr. Zine. I did co-second his motion on this issue here. You know, it's not really going to resolve much of anything until the federal government finally steps up to the plate and appreciates the fact that the state of California in 1996 passed Proposition 215, medicinal use of marijuana. Some people think it's an herb, others think it's a draconian killer. Try alcohol, folks. We know that's a draconian killer, and we know the aggressiveness, and all kinds of battering comes out of drunks. But the reality is, it's against the law. So we in the city of Los Angeles, in an attempt to appreciate Prop. 215, have put this proposal before us. We have allowed clinics to happen following the rules of the state. I am thrilled that our Attorney General, Jerry Brown, has jumped into the fray as well. This is a big deal, but it isn't until we see a change of the guard in Washington and we get a better understanding of the dumb drug laws of the '80s that are bad laws. We have 2.3 million people in prison. Do you realize that? More than any other country on the earth. We're 5% of the world's population, we have 25% of the world's incarceration. Half of them are in there for this drug business, which has turned into an insane situation where we're ruining kids' lives over nothingness. Now, that's another story. This is more the medicinal use of marijuana, and we're making an effort here to point out states do have rights. But frankly, we need a new president that will look beyond the box that we're in now and do something more significant. But thank you, Ms. Hahn, and thank you, Mr. Zine, especially you, Mr. Zine, being a cop like that, being right out there and saying the law's the law in the state and what we're doing is the right thing, and let's have some policies and rules. So God bless you for that, and God bless everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Does anybody technically, Mr. Zine, would you maybe know on this issue here, how does it work that someone, and I think anyone who suffers should be able to use what is prescribed by a doctor, anything to ease their pain, but how does it work that someone gets a prescription that allows them to acquire this drug?
There are some doctors that will give a prescription for medicinal marijuana if you have a headache. There are some doctors, if you stub your toe, that give you a prescription.
But is that appropriate?
No, it's not appropriate. That's not what it's about. And we're talking about the legitimacy of the people who need it. The people who need it, that's what it's about. People who have serious illness, not because you have a headache, not because you want to get high and you want to use that as an excuse, and we found that there are abuses with that. I've met with a narcotics officer from the police department who related situations to me, such as what I've just related. So the legitimacy is what we're concerned with. Someone who has a serious medical problem, whether it's AIDS or cancer or some other illness, and this, what it does, when you're taking medication, it causes you to be nauseous. What the marijuana does is reduce that nausea. It eliminates the nausea so you can eat. The bottom line is, medication for the serious problem causes the after effect, and what the medicinal marijuana is supposed to do is eliminate that so you can live with somewhat normal life. David Fleming, a prominent attorney, his wife uses medicinal marijuana because she has a very serious illness. There are people who really need it to survive, and those are the ones that we want to make sure can have it without being illegal.
I got that. I support that greatly. There are some in North Hollywood area, speaking of Mr. Fleming, where there's a high amount of facilities
Right.
that open up, and the challenges that they have, whether they're serving those who are focused on, that you just described, or those who are taking advantage of some other headache, if you will.
And that's the problem.
So thank you for your leadership on this, and I hope we can, because I know there's some places popping up right next to schools that have a conservative school administrators and others.
Well, once the moratorium took place, they can't open any new facilities. There's a moratorium prevents any additional facilities.
When did the moratorium take place, then?
A year ago.
So if...
So if anything's opened up...
So if the northeast area on Fountain Avenue and the 4100 block or 3900 block they opened up, then they may be in violation.
If they opened up within the last year, they're in violation.
Thank you. I'll have it investigated in the proper way.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. We can go ahead and prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved, and without objection, Mr. Zine will send that forth with. Next item, please.
Item 54, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item 54.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I certainly appreciate you seconding this motion. We've been, as a district, along with Ms. Perry and Ms. Hahn, been watching closely a number of issues that deal with medical care in the South LA area, and it is the centerpiece of all of this is the closure of MLK Hospital, which is just one of 11 hospitals that have closed in the area. We're about to celebrate the one-year anniversary of the loss of MLK as an emergency room or in-care patient facility. There's a number of things that, going out in the community and talking to people that have prompted this motion to identify areas that we believe could supplement MLK Hospital appointments recovery, and we were moving forward on a motion to ask the county to consider several things, such as streamlining the bureaucracy. It is our understanding that in going to county facilities, whether it's mental aid or physical assistance, that many times the packages and the medical records are kept in isolation, and that doctors going from one location to another did not have access have access to the multiple clinics that patients go to. So, we're asking the county to streamline and use more of the IT function to allow medical records to be accessible to doctors and patients. We've also seen a trend towards, uh, mobile clinics versus building concrete and mortar clinics that are far more expensive, but also with mobile clinics, we'd have the ability to move the patient care to senior facilities, schools, and places where there are a large number of patients, as opposed to causing patients to get on the, uh, the public transportation system to try to get care. The other issue that we're asking the county to research is that we see every 18 months to two years, a new medical director being brought to the county, and then they, after 18 months or two years, move on to another facility or another activity or even out of the state. We're asking that the county evaluate whether it's feasible to have an elected public health officer or a county surgeon general to be put in place, uh, that then is a identifiable, uh, person or function that is now held accountable for the issues that we're now suffering with as it relates to the lack of medical services in the county. And so, these are three items that I think are very important and that we want to move forward on in asking the county to consider them in hopes that as we continue to work with the county as it relates to opening MLK, that these three supplemental issues can be also considered simultaneously. I'd also ask on a verbal motion to add to this that, uh, we as a council, uh, number one, commend, uh, certainly the efforts that have been done so far with the county and the UC system, but we also remind them that we're still a year, uh, since the closure of the hospital, and we ask them to redouble their effort in order to get MLK opened as quickly as possible. In the area of MLK, we represent about one hospital bed per thousand residents, where throughout the nation is 4.3 hospital beds per thousand within the United States. Certainly in this area, uh, that is a critical issue, particularly when 50 percent of the residents do not have medical care. And so, I'd ask that we add that verbal motion and ask that, uh, in addition to moving this to the county, that we ask, as a council, that we direct a letter to both the county and the governor to ask that they continue this effort with the UC system and to bring MLK back online as, as quickly as possible because of the urgent, uh, issue of medical care in the South Los Angeles area and, in fact, the entire county.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is next, then, Mr. Lavange, then Ms. Hahn.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, I wanted to also rise in support of the importance of urging and asking the county to, uh, adopt these proposals, uh, with respect to file sharing, uh, with respect to having, uh, the UC system at the table, uh, to continue to work with us to try to re-establish a strong presence, uh, for the hospital, and to be able to bring the clinics to where the people are. Uh, and mobility in that regard is, uh, key and is of utmost importance as people's needs change, fluctuate. Some people have the ability to, uh, get to where they need to go, and many others don't. So, I hope that the county will hear what we, uh, have to say and give us all due consideration so that we can maximize the resources that we do have and may have in the future in South Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Lavange.
Stand to support you in this effort here. I do know it's so important. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for your work as well. Uh, Ms. Hahn, you also asked for a liaison officer from the city of Los Angeles. In 1952, we had a health department, and we consolidated with the county somewhere in the early 50s. We used to run city hospitals up until the 1970s. City Hall South was originally built as the health building for the city of Los Angeles. Uh, this is so important to look at it, and also, uh, if, uh, Mr. Miller is here, Mr. Miller is talking to Mr., I won't say who, uh, on an issue, Mr. Miller, we're talking about the health department. What are other cities? Long Beach and Pasadena have their own health departments. Uh, how are they functioning? How do they operate? What's their relationship with the county? And I would strongly support an executive, uh, officer, I don't know if it would be a surgeon general, but someone region-wide for all of the county of Los Angeles, because disease knows no boundaries, uh, and it, it would be good to look at it from a regional approach. And do other cities in the country have an executive officer? And, Mr. Parks, will you look at an elected position possibly created, just like a sheriff, which is so important? That would be the one person, and maybe they'd have to be, uh, like the DA has to be, uh, a lawyer. Uh, the sheriff would have to be a, he or she would have to be a doctor or, or in the medical profession, uh, whether it's in, uh, something, but broaden that so that they know it. Uh, but if you just could look at that, maybe have staff look at that, and also, Ms. Hahn, uh, sometime called for a liaison officer for this. I, I know you probably had it on the tip of your tongue, and I beat you to it, but as committee chair, I'm a little stucked at why it's not up. So, if you could find that for, I appreciate it, Mr. Miller. Mr. President, I turn the microphone back to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavange, and our last speaker is Ms. Hahn. Ms. Hahn, you're up.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Parks, for, uh, bringing this item up this morning. It's unfortunate that all we can do in the city of Los Angeles is urge the county to have a complete overhaul of their healthcare system, uh, but that's the way, uh, government works. The county is responsible for providing healthcare to the people who live in the county of Los Angeles. We, on the other hand, can only urge, cajole, uh, cry about, uh, the lack of healthcare to many people. But, uh, I love the idea of having maybe a countywide, uh, um, a health officer, uh, elected by the people who could really be accountable to the people, uh, for providing healthcare, uh, in the county of Los Angeles. I also would like to urge us to move forward on the idea that the city have, uh, a healthcare officer liaison so that we can always be at the table when the county is making decisions about healthcare, because just because they provide the service doesn't mean that our constituents aren't affected. And I will say today, it still troubles me greatly, uh, that the people that I serve in the community of Watts do not have access to a full-service hospital. And I will tell you, uh, last Thursday night, when I was, uh, among those who were, uh, seated at the very historic moment for this country, uh, when Barack Obama, uh, accepted his party's nomination, it was also the 45th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. And I thought to myself, sitting there, what a shame, what a crying shame, that all these years later, uh, the people of South Los Angeles, uh, do not have access to what should be a basic right, not a privilege, a basic right, to have access to a hospital that has an emergency room, has a trauma center, uh, has all the, the services that a person will need from the time they're born to the time they die, and that is not the case right here in Los Angeles. And of all the parts of this motion, uh, Mr. Parks, that you call for, there is nothing as important as reopening the Martin Luther King Jr. Hospital as a full-service quality healthcare facility, uh, for the people in South Los Angeles. And I know for a fact, those that I have been elected to represent in Watts are very disenfranchised now from something as basic as receiving, uh, quality healthcare for themselves and their families. Uh, we must not rest until that hospital is reopened as it once was, which was a fine hospital, uh, in the center of Los Angeles that provided quality healthcare. So, thank you for, for bringing this up. Uh, hopefully someday we'll be able to do more than just urge, uh, but we will be at the table to help make, uh, the appropriate decisions about the county's ability to deliver healthcare to all of our constituents.
Thank you. Let's go ahead, uh, with that and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting an interrufal.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused October 1st and 3rd for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Friday, September 9th to leave at 11:00, Wednesday, September 17th to leave at 11:30, and for Friday, September 19th to arrive at 11:00. All for city business. That meets council policy.
That excuse is granted as well.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Tuesday, September 16th for city business. That meets council policy.
She is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused for Friday, September 5th for city business. A motion is required.
All right, I will move Ms. Perry seconds. Without objection, that excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Zine requests to be excused December 3rd, 5th, 9th, 10th, and 12th for city business. Those all meet council policy.
Okay, uh, he is excused.
That clears desk.
All right, any, uh, business announcements, folks, on committees or anything else? Mr. Lavange?
The only business was a great business this weekend with the University of Southern California, uh, having a great game, uh, in their first victory, and also UCLA last night having a great victory.
I can't forget the Bruins there, you know, we had a double victory.
I wouldn't forget either one, but I did it in chronological order.
Wouldn't you say to the Bruins was kind of a bigger victory, considering they beat a top-20 team?
Uh, but the only victory that counts is the one you get today. They got them both today, and I'm happy for both Pete Carroll and Rick Duhysel.
That's a beautiful thing. Yes, Mr. Parks, your opinion on this, and we'll, we'll give the final word to Mr. Reyes after Mr. Smith.
No, I'm, I'm just gonna let the video speak for itself.
Okay.
I just want to make, give everybody a copy of the, uh, our new map of Exposition Park. It's something we copied, an idea that Tom had in Griffith Park, but it's something that gives, and, uh, we have several dozen of these, if you want to share them with your public, that talks about all of the sites around Angels Walk, a variety of things that are in the park and which we can highlight, even the bus directions, uh, directions from the freeway, variety of ways, so that we just share that with you. We'll, we'll be getting more copies in as the printer makes them available, but it's a, gonna be a very helpful tool, uh, for the community.
Thank you. What color is the subway here?
Subway is gonna be the rose line.
Rose line. Looks a little awkward in, in the map, but yes, Mr. Cardenas?
No, just point of clarification, I think, uh, Councilmember Lavange was talking about the two Los Angeles college teams, uh, NCAA teams, UCLA won, correct, and USC won, but I think UCLA was the only team that was playing a ranked team.
I didn't know much about it, and I think the great thing about the Bruins is they, they didn't give up, and, uh, and the great thing about their coach, the first thing that Coach Duhysel said is he congratulated, uh, Coach Walker, the defensive coordinator, and Coach Chow, the offensive coordinator. So, that was great teamwork, and we're happy, but, uh...
Mr. Reyes, uh, final word, Mr. Reyes.
I just think it's gonna be a great, exciting year, and, uh, every time we either win or lose, we're gonna have something to say to celebrate this great city.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, with that, if I could ask everybody to please rise in council chambers for adjourning And colleagues, uh, Mr. Lavange and I would like to, uh, start, uh, by remembering a great Angelino, uh, who passed, uh, Hans, uh, the, on August 19th, just, uh, before our break. Uh, William Bill Frederick Hertz, who I think is known to a lot of people in these chambers, a longtime theater executive and former chairman of the Hollywood Walk of Fame, one of the few non-celebrities whose handprints and footprints are in the forecourt of Mann's Chinese Theater, has died at 84. He was a dear friend to me, I know to Mr. Lavange as well, and to all in the Hollywood community. He died in his home in Tarzana in Mr. Zine's district of complications from heart surgery. He was a longtime director of marketing and public relations for Mann Theaters until his retirement in 1991, but he was a, a true Hollywood fixture. He remained with the company as a consultant and worked, um, all the way up into the end. For more than 20 years, uh, Bill oversaw the handprint and footprint ceremonies for Grauman's Chinese Theater, and for more than a decade served as master of ceremonies for the dedication and installation of hundreds of celebrity stars on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. He compiled a diverse record of community involvement, serving as president of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, a board member of the Hollywood Revitalization Committee, and chairman of the Santa Claus Lane Parade. He was a board member and former president of the William H. Parker Los Angeles Police Foundation. I think many of us around here have gone to that annual, uh, golf tournament where Mr. Hertz, uh, was, um, the real spirit behind supporting our police department. In 1999, his handprints and footprints were preserved in concrete in front of Mann's Chinese Theater in recognition of his community service and dedication to the motion picture industry. Bill was born December 5th, 1923, in Wischek, North Dakota. He served in the Army as a staff sergeant in Europe during World War II, a member of the Greatest Generation. He came to Los Angeles afterwards and began working as a manager for Fox West Coast Theaters and worked his way up literally from a theater to heading up the theater chain. He moved up through the ranks by 1965, was appointed first-run district manager for the LA market. 67, he was promoted to Pacific Division Manager after National General's takeover of the chain, and after Ted Mann purchased National General, Hertz was named Director of Theater Operations. He's survived by an incredible family. His wife of more than 60 years, Ruth, two sons, William Hertz II of Glendale and Stephen Hertz of Spokane, Washington, a daughter, Mary Kalish of Spokane, Washington, 14 grandchildren, six great-grandchildren. I know Mr. Lavange would like to say a couple words. Bill, we're gonna miss you a lot. Rest in peace.
Bill, uh, Hertz was truly a saint. Uh, he was what, uh, a public relation man, as they termed him in Hollywood, was always about, and so friendly and so helpful, but as both Eric and I went to his memorial, which was so nice, he never missed his children's softball games. He was a coach, his, all the Little League, all the thing it was right about, a human being, it was in Bill Hertz. So, I was just honored that Eric and I were both to be there, uh, for his family and say a few words. It was a beautiful tribute.
Mr. Alacon and Mr. Parks on that? Is, is it on this, Mr. Alacon? Okay, please.
To hear of Bill's passing, uh, I, I was not aware of that. Uh, he was a very, uh, good person. Uh, I, I don't know how to describe it. We work with a lot of, uh, marketing-type people, uh, who are very aggressive personalities. Uh, Bill was, uh, an aggressive personality, but you wouldn't know it. Uh, he would get things done. Uh, I particularly want to point out that, uh, his participation in the negotiations relative to the redevelopment of the General Motors Plant were critical, uh, the commitment of Mann Theaters, uh, to go into the plant, uh, in a tough neighborhood, right across the street from Blythe Street where we were having some gang activity, was, uh, a commitment that I thought, uh, demonstrated that Bill really cared about Los Angeles, uh, to the extent that he would go to the mat with Mann Theaters to make sure that they were represented in the negotiation process. Um, I, I really believe that, uh, that, without that piece, that development might not have occurred, and as Mr. Cardenas knows, because he has acquired that in his district now, um, that is a critical, uh, retail operation to the economy of the Panorama City area, and so, uh, Bill was a, was a genuine, uh, lover of Los Angeles, as Tom Lavange said. Uh, I did participate in a number of those golf tournaments. Uh, he, he was absolutely dedicated to, uh, the notion of, of, uh, having a positive attitude about our police department, and he's a huge supporter of our police. Uh, but more importantly, he was just a, a genuine human being, and, uh, and it was always refreshing, uh, to talk to Bill because he always had such a positive attitude.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
I think, Mr. President, I'd just like to say I've worked with him for years, uh, while in the police department, and his, uh, involvement in the, uh, Parker, uh, Foundation, and even though he was, uh, committed to Parker, he also lent hand on the Memorial Fund and other kinds of activities, and was always just a genuine supporter of, uh, LAPD and all of the, uh, programs, and, uh, I talked with him probably, uh, maybe six months ago, and even though he was in Ailing Health, he would never know that. He just, uh, plugged along and said, uh, uh, he was gonna make the best of it. So, uh, he's really a, a great guy.
Thank you. Anybody else on Mr. Hertz? Okay, uh, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. You know, last week, uh, also, while many of us were, um, at the convention, uh, every woman, uh, Congress member was wearing, um, uh, a button that was memorializing, um, Congresswoman Stephanie Tubbs Jones, uh, who was the first African-American woman to represent Ohio, uh, in Congress, and had such a, a great, uh, career on a number of things. Uh, but I will tell you, those of us who, uh, went to an Emily's List lunch and honoring women who'd been elected in this country, they had a video of her, uh, and it was clear that her spirit, her enthusiasm, her, um, passion and love for public service was so evident, and, uh, I thought it was appropriate that, uh, we adjourn our city council meeting in the memory of, uh, Congresswoman Stephanie Tubbs Jones, who, again, died so suddenly at age 58, a big shock, I think, to all Congress. Uh, many of them left the convention and flew, uh, to her services on Saturday, uh, but a great woman who, um, overcame certainly, uh, a great number of obstacles and challenges to be elected to Congress from Ohio, and I thought it would be appropriate that we honor her. Uh, I'm not sure, uh, who her family members are that we could send this to, but I certainly think our Speaker of the House, Nancy Pelosi, would appreciate, uh, the city, uh, sending our condolences to her on the loss of a great woman in Congress, uh, Stephanie Tubbs Jones.
We'll be, yeah, we'll do all members on that. We'll be sure to make sure that gets there. She was a, a close friend of my family's as well. She was a district attorney earlier in her career, and she came out here to Los Angeles and spent time, uh, with my father when, when he was in the district attorney's office, and she... in the district attorney's office, and she was just an incredibly inspiring woman, and a huge loss for American politics with her loss, thank you, Mr. Labonge?
Mr. Parks, I would like to have us all join in adjourning memory of Gene Upshaw, who was a tremendous leader in the National Football League, a great Hall of Fame football player for the Oakland Raiders, number 63, big 6'5", 255 rookie out of Texas A&amp;M, and he came to Oakland and dominated that position, and he always taped his hands up, and they called him the Mummy, as he would swing out as a guard and level the field as the Raiders would score around his blocking. Later on, he was the head of the Players Association, where he developed the dynamic skills of working with the owners and the teams to get the best deal for the players, which was so important, he was diagnosed three days before his death with cancer, he survived by his wife Terry and his sons, I ask we adjourn in memory of the great Gene Upshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Parks?
You know, one thing is kind of interesting, I never knew him when he played ball here, but having gone back to many of the NFL meetings, got a chance to see him, and he was intimidating 20 years after playing football, I mean, because the guy was so big, but yet you found that he made so much of a benefit to ballplayers on these salaries and longevity and all of those things, that often he didn't get the appreciation, in fact, there was a lot of turmoil in the union about whether he did enough for ballplayers, but when you go back and look at the salaries and the range of salaries and the benefits, he's done one heck of a job, and I was shocked, because he looked like the picture of health, and to find out three days before he had pancreatic cancer that he died suddenly.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Reverend Dan B. Jenong Jr., who passed away August 12th at the age of 93, he attended school in Arizona and received his Master of Divinity from the University of Chicago, and in 1942, he and his wife moved to South Los Angeles to continue instilling the principles of the disciples of Christ. He established a new church and community center to help those coping with the challenges of the time, All Peoples Christian Church and Center was a safe haven for families and residents at that time of Japanese descent who were ordered to leave their homes and confined to detention camps. They are still here today, still serving the community, and the organization still continues to thrive and exist. While in retirement, Reverend Jenong wrote two books, one in remembrance of his grandfather, Charles V. Jenong, called Death in His Saddlebag, the other entitled A Street Called Love, which commemorated his experience at All Peoples. He was a quiet and compassionate spiritual leader, whose presence, love, and grace was felt by all who ever made his acquaintance. His contributions and accomplishments have been of great value to the entire city of Los Angeles, and he is survived by his wife, this is amazing, 65 years, Frances Ulrich Jenong, four children, 10 grandchildren, and a host of great-grand and great-great-grandchildren.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, colleagues, as we know, standing here every time we do adjourning moments, all we have is the moment, and three dear friends passed away in the last two weeks. The other day, we honored, six months ago, Ed Guthman, remember? He was here in a wheelchair, and he got up, and he got to the podium and spoke. Edwin O. Guthman, Press Secretary to Robert F. Kennedy, National Editor of the Los Angeles Times, Journalism Professor at USC Annenberg School for Communications, and a decorated World War II Vet, died Sunday with his family at his home in the Pacific Palisades, he was 89. I spoke to his daughter the next morning, and she told me of his passing, everybody was around him, all four children, and I gotta tell you, over the last year, as I watched Ed decline, his family was absolutely the best, taking care of him, being with him, he had his 89th birthday, August 11th, had the pleasure of being there with him and chatting with him and hanging out, as did a whole lot of other people that were very close to him over the years. You know, it was an honor to have him living in the 11th district, and he was born August 11th, 1919, in Seattle. Guthman attended the University of Washington and worked as a reporter for the Seattle Star before he was drafted in World War II. He served in North Africa and Italy, and was wounded and received the Purple Heart and the Silver Star. Ed was revered by all in the field of journalism, and was awarded the Pulitzer Prize for national reporting in 1950 for his stories in the Seattle Times on the Washington Legislature's Un-American Activities Committee. He reported, cleared a University of Washington professor from allegations that he was a communist supporter. Guthman was the Press Secretary for the Attorney General of the late Senator Robert F. Kennedy. He genuinely believed that Kennedy would make ours a more compassionate and less corrupt country. Guthman was the Los Angeles Times National Editor from 1965 to 1977, then served for a decade as editorial page editor for the Philadelphia Inquirer. In 1971, Guthman was the third name on the 20-name list of political opponents singled out for harassment in a memo sent from Nixon's aide, Charles Coulson, to John Dean. He was a journalist professor and senior lecturer at the University of Southern California from 1987 until his retirement last year. In the 90s, Guthman was one of the founding commissioners and president of the Los Angeles City Ethics Commission. He also was one of the three outstanding experts who reviewed and harshly criticized the 1993 federal standoff at the Branch Davidian compound outside Waco, Texas, in which about 80 people died. You remember, we honored him here in this chamber, and I must say, these Friday honoring things, they come back in a very positive way, when you realize we acknowledge people that are making a huge difference in our lives, and it was an honor to be able to honor him here. He has spent his long life being a man of resolute, unshakable integrity, humility, and moral courage, and will be remembered as an impassioned advocate for civil rights, and as I mentioned, his four children were around his bedside as he passed, and we're having a service at 1 o'clock Friday, this Friday, September 5th, at Hillside Memorial Park and Mortuary, and I'd like to say all members on...
Yeah, and Ms. Gruehl, I think, wanted to add, Ms. Gruehl and then Mr. Labonge?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, thank you, and he was an incredible gentleman, and I, when Ken Rich died just a few months ago, he and Ken are up there chatting away, because I had some of my best times with Ed, sitting at Ken's house and having political debates and conversations there, and he was someone, no matter how young I was when I first met him, you know, I thought this is a, you know, very important person, but he would sit and chat with you and have conversations, and was always such a big supporter, and really touched a number of people's lives, and I remember when you had the chance to honor him here, and his family was so excited about that, and he, I think, was also very touched by that, we do have to remember that, it means a lot to people when they come to this podium, and we can recognize them for the entire city of Los Angeles for their contributions, and so my heart goes out to the family and to know that it was really a privilege and an honor to have known Ed throughout these years. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Bill, it just goes, and all of us members, as you say, the moment when you had the Ed Guthman Day here, six months ago, being at his birthday, his history, and I think in reading his obituary, to hear that Tom Brokaw, a national reporter, who did have some Los Angeles roots, but also say that Ed Guthman was a treasure here in the country, a great American, was so true in his history, and I hope others do read and learn of him, and his work at USC in the School of Communication was so important, contributing all his life, and I had a great opportunity with you to meet his grandchildren at the Robert F. Kennedy Memorial, when we had it earlier this year, and what a wonderful life, and just as you spoke earlier, Mr. President, about Bill Hertz, you speak about Ed Guthman and others, Gene Upshaw, all of them, family and what it meant to them, their family rallying at the moment.
Mr. Rosenthal, we'll do all members on that.
Thank you all for your comments, too, one of the great ladies in Venice, Helen O'Neill, who I was actually with a month ago, standing there at Venice Beach, we were having a ceremony of some sort, she was 84 years old when she passed away, and she died from stroke in Capistrano on August 10th, she was devoted to three things, her family, her faith, and her passion for Marina Del Rey and Venice Communities. In fact, among the organizations she was involved in was the Marina Del Rey and Venice Chamber of Commerce, Friends of the Marina Library, Friends of the Venice Library, the Los Angeles Press Club, and the Screen Actors Guild, I knew her from the Press Club days when I was in the Press Club, but when I got elected to this job, she was one of those folks I saw everywhere, all the time, positive spirit on Venice Beach, always caring about community, and she passed, and may she rest in peace. And the third one I have, Mr. President, is the mother of our Commissioner, David Wolf. You know, David Wolf is a Commissioner in disabilities, he lives in his wheelchair, he's a great guy, and his mother passed away, I just spoke to him on the phone a few minutes before this, told him that we would be adjourning in her memory, and you know, he said to me on the phone a few minutes ago, he said, "Bill, the only part that I can say I liked about it was, she was suffering so much lately, and for her to pass on was a blessing," and then I told him what I do, which is now pray to her for strength and grace for yourself going forward, and he said he would, and may Gladys rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Han?
Yeah, I also had spoken to the Commissioner earlier this week after I'd heard, and he had such great comments about his mother's accomplishments, she was, really had a lot of accomplishments in her own right, and one of the things he said he remembered as a child was her taking the time to take him to visit museums and art galleries, and really trying to teach him really about a diverse cultural, you know, heritage, so he had just wonderful things to say about his mother, it's always hard to lose a parent, as he said, you're never quite prepared for that moment, but I know that he will miss her greatly, but he was great in talking about how great his mom was and the accomplishments that she, in her own right, had been able to accomplish.
Mr. Smith, you want to say on this one, too? I'm sorry, I'm just going to orders, people, we'll get to right after Mr. Labonge.
And I would ask that my name could be added to that, as a co-author, Mr. Wolf and the family lived in my district a few blocks from my home, and I've known him for many years, and Gladys was one of those nurturing mothers that, for those of you who don't know, David Wolf, our Commissioner, is a brilliant young man whose body doesn't want to do what he wants it to do, and he has very little control of his body, and from birth, Gladys has been one of those mothers that said, "That's not gonna stand in the way of my being a good mother and him being a good son," and they ensured that he had a good education, that he was well-versed in all the important things of the world, and David went to university, his father is a biological science professor and expert researcher at USC, and they made sure that his mind was developed, even though his body could never be, and they were wonderful people, so I'd like to add mine to that.
Mr. Labonge, and then Mr. Alacon?
Beautiful mother to have such a wonderful son, who accomplishes so much, and struggles to come in through here multiple times a year, and then be in that commission. If we could, following Mr. Smith and Ms. Han's signature, I'd like to sign that as well.
Yeah, we'll do all members on that one, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Smith, you have another one, right, and then Mr. Alacon, and Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, I have two, and I want to thank Mr. Labonge for bringing these to my attention, I was out of town when these came to his attention, and so I thank Mr. Labonge for bringing them to my attention. Ask the council to adjourn in memory of Army Sergeant Du Hai Tran, 30, of Chatsworth, who was killed by a roadside bomb in Iraq. It's important to remember, as American presence in Iraq is dwindling quickly, and I think they announced yesterday, we are out of 11 of the 18 provinces now, we've turned back to the Iraqis, there are still American soldiers fighting over there, and being killed every day. Du Hai Tran of Chatsworth was married to his wife Michelle, and they had a baby, he left for Iraq seven days after the baby was born for second tour of duty. He was born in Ho Chi Minh City, Vietnam, and at the end of the Vietnam War, his father, Viet Quan Trak, who had fought for the South Vietnamese feared retribution and fled the country, but he left behind his son and his family, they were able to get out nine years later and came to America. Upon coming to America, he was quite a young man and decided he wanted to fight for this country, his new country, and enlisted in the United States Army. On the afternoon of June 19th, Tran called home and told his wife, Michelle, that he was going out on patrol, he called her when he got back later that night. A few hours later, he was killed by an improvised explosive device detonated him near the Baqwa area of northeast Baghdad. In addition to his wife and his daughter, he leave behind his father, sister, and a brother, and is survived by another sister, Rebecca, through his mother who still lives in Vietnam. Second, I'd like to ask the council to adjourn the memory of Army Private Gairard Jesus Garcia, 29, who was killed also by a roadside bomb in Afghanistan. He was a very innocent child, his mother said, he was not the normal young man you think would volunteer to be in the United States Army. He loved museums, plays, and concerts, his greatest joy was going to the theater, and remember, his mother said he loved Madame Butterfly. He also played the piano, the trumpet, and a saxophone player. On top of that, at Birmingham High School, he was an accomplished football player, ran track, and loved soccer, and wanted to be a soccer player when he got out of the Army. Garcia, 29, had been in Afghanistan less than two months when a military official was announced that he was killed with four other Americans on August 1st, when struck by a roadside bomb in Chakwe Valley of northeast Afghanistan, the Kunar Province. In addition to his mother, he is survived by his wife, Gabriela, his son Noah, and from a previous relationship, and his father, Guadalupe Garcia, his stepfather, Jacob Averny, two brothers, Ricardo and Rorodaro, and a sister, Celeste Garcia. May they rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon?
Members, I have three adjourning motions, first of all, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Armando Kiko Alarcon Loesa, age 49, he was born in Los Angeles, April 6th, 1954, I'm sorry, 1959, but was a resident of Pacoima his entire life. He attended Pacoima Junior High, graduated from Poly High School, and also took courses at Pacoima Skill Center. He was always involved in his son's athletic activities, he was an avid Rams fan, and enjoyed Twilight Zone marathons, he worked construction with his father until 2003, when he became ill with liver disease, and was very dedicated to helping his mother, who is my grandfather's first cousin. In 1998, he, along with 30 family members and friends, walked the Revlon Cancer Walk in honor of his sister Helen, who is a cancer survivor. He loved his family, community, and this city. He leaves his parents, Macario Loesa and Carmen Alarcon, his son Armando Jr., three sisters, and five brothers. In addition, I would like to adjourn in memory of Manuel Figueres Sr. This council honored his son Manny Figueres when he was my deputy, when I was in the Senate, Ms. Gruehl honored my deputy, which I think is a very interesting thing, when we don't usually honor other people's staff, quite frankly, but it tells you the kind of person that Manny Figueres is, and so I think it's a reflection of his father, who immigrated to this country from Cuba, and raised his family here. He was born in Guantanamo, Cuba, his father was a very accomplished hotel owner and restaurateur, after being successful in the wine importing business called La Vina Portugues. He had four sisters and one brother, his parents also cared for two cousins who were left orphaned, Manuel studied accounting in the Institute of Commerce. In 1959, he married Anna Rojas, and worked at a local hardware store, he and Anna had two children, Manuel Jr. and Juan, Manuel Sr. and Anna wanted to make a better life in the United States of America. Because of that, he was punished and was forced to work in the sugarcane fields, but after 22 months, he was returned home because he contracted a foot fungus. And in July of 1969, Manuel and his wife Anna and two sons left Cuba via a program established by Lyndon Johnson, and while at the airport, ready to leave Cuba, he got word that his mother had just passed away. He had to struggle with a decision at that time of whether to continue forward to the United States or to stay with his family in Cuba, he obviously made a decision to come to America because he wanted to take care of his family. He never did return to Cuba, and while in the United States, worked a variety of jobs, including the cafeteria at Robinson's May, pharmacy tech in Los Angeles, and he was a machinist at Glen Air Inc. for 17 years until his retirement in 1969. I think his... I think his struggle, a very humble man who was absolutely dedicated to his family, one of the quiet people from Cuba who just came and lived an American life, and I think the work that Manny Figueres has done in dedicating service to the community in the last 15 years, working for me and Alex Padilla for a short time, demonstrates, I think, the quality of this person. Let me give you an example. At his funeral, the son was saying, first of all, Manny explained that his father's favorite restaurant was Home Buffet. But they said, "If you really want to know what kind of man he was, his favorite place to eat was at Costco." I know every one of you--
Good deal.
--has had those samplers at Costco, but I guarantee you that you did not do what he would do at Costco, and that is, he would give them a tip because he felt that they were deserving of that respect. So he was a very special person in a very quiet, humble kind of way, and I think that's reflected in Manny and his brother, and the way they lead their lives, dedicated to their family. So we're in my office very saddened by that, and we know that Manny will continue to keep his father's memory every day of his life.
Before the last one, I think Ms. Gruehl wanted to add something on that, too.
I wanted to comment because I had the pleasure of meeting and knowing Manny Figueres's family and his parents and his dad, and you're right, he was a very quiet man. But he and his wife would go everywhere. You would see them at every event. I saw them at the Senior Center, and they were so proud of Manny, and we would talk about them. And Manny in particular, I spoke to him, I was on my way out of town and heard the news and called him from the airport and had a chance to talk to him. And clearly Manny felt as though his dad was such a strong part of his life and was saddened by his death, but also knows that his father was in a better place and knows that he has responsibility to make sure his mom is okay, because they were a pair. And Manny talked about, you know, every day checking on his dad and talking to his dad, and I know that he is going to miss his father. But Manny is such a wonderful person because of his family and because of his dad, and so I wanted to join you and second your motion for his father.
Thank you. Add a second, you want to be on that, too? Mr. Lebon?
Because that's the beautiful thing about Manny and his parents, and you said it, but his dad, Manny is a very special human being, so he's stronger for the love that his dad gave him.
Thank you. Ms. Alakon.
I'm also sad to, just on the way to city council, I learned that my chief of staff, Said Ali's mother passed away suddenly. Ironically, her daughter performed surgery on her just a couple of weeks ago for a carpal tunnel and was just arriving at the airport today, or yesterday, I should say, when they learned that the mother passed through other causes naturally. I would like to do a formal adjournment motion, but I did want to make those of you who know Said well aware of the passing. And I would just like to say this because we're still getting details. She was 81 years old. Her name is Sahira Ali. She lived her entire life in India, and I've learned from Said that most of the Muslims in India moved to Pakistan, or many of them did, and it's a very interesting history. If you know Said, you know that you can talk about just about anything academically, and he'll know something about it. He's really an amazing person. But to tell you a little bit about his mother, Said always tells the story, or he doesn't tell the story very often, but I noticed on his resume that he had worked for Indira Gandhi. And I said, "Well, you must have been a talent to, at 19 years old, do interning for Indira Gandhi." And he said, "No, she was a friend of my mother." So I don't have a lot of information about the mother, but indeed, she was a friend of Indira Gandhi's, and I can tell you that her seven children, two of whom are doctors, are all over the world, literally. And in fact, I'm not sure that all of them have even been notified at this point. But Said is a tremendous person who has contributed to California greatly, particularly with his work for Senator Polanco on the budget, Sub 4, and for several other members. He essentially was an institution in Sacramento and now is an institution in my office, and a tremendous contributor in so many different ways. But I think it's all a reflection of this tremendous family who, notwithstanding the tens of thousands of miles in distance, stays in touch with each other every week. And so we are extending our condolences to Said and his entire family. In fact, his son was lobbying on the bicycle issue just the other day before we had recess. But it's a good family. I hope to come back with a little more detail about the mother, but we wish them well as they are grieving their mother's loss and will convene in India to send her to her next place.
Thank you. We'll put all members on that. Any other adjournment motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll. We'll be back in session tomorrow. That'll be September 3rd, Wednesday. Look forward to seeing you.